Joining us for tonight's regular council meeting, Tuesday, March 14th. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Kelly Cody, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, a roll call. Please perform a roll call.
Sakura.
Here.
Terrencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here.
And everyone present, we do have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to ask Chief Cody to step to the podium. We have a special event tonight, a swearing in of a new police officer. I do have to mention, Chief told me not to get too mushy, but this will be his last swearing in of his illustrious career here in Utica.
That it is. Mayor and Council, I would like to thank you to give you an opportunity to meet our most recent hire into the Police Department, and that is Stephen Bartra, who's standing behind me tonight. He was recruited by the city while he was in the Macomb Police Academy. The City of Utica is fortunate to have Stephen join the ranks of the Police Department on this special day, and you indicated it is a special day. This is Stephen's birthday today, so we have a number of things to celebrate. Formerly a lifeguard, Stephen grew up in the city of Roseville, where he currently lives with his family. Stephen is currently in field training and will become part of our patrol schedule this year in June. Tonight has special meaning to me, as you indicated. This is going to be the last officer, last person that I get an opportunity to introduce under my leadership into the department. So it's been a long time, and I'm very proud to introduce him and welcome Stephen into the Police Department. I look forward to seeing him grow in his new career field here with Utica. He's joined tonight by his family and friends. His mother will be pinning his badge on him for tonight's ceremony. So Stephen, if you'd join the mayor in the center of the room along with your mother and father.
If you could raise your right hand. I solemnly swear. Or affirm. Or affirm. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of this state. The Constitution of this state. The Charter for the City of Utica. The Charter for the City of Utica. The rules and regulations. The rules and regulations. Policies and procedures. Policies and procedures. And the general orders. And the general orders. Of the Utica Police Department. Of the Utica Police Department. And that I will faithfully discharge. I will faithfully discharge. The duties of police officers. The duties of police officers. For the City of Utica. For the City of Utica. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Hey, Mom, this is for you. I'm going to open it up. Now, we had a, our last swearing in, we had some trickery. They put a Velcro patch. You don't get the benefit of that.
Thank you. I did.
Just checking. Just checking. We got rules here.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Glad to have you. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to working with you.
You're in a great spot. Are you going to love it here? Are you 17 or 18 now?
You're 18.
You're going to love it here, man. You're in a great spot. That's counting the D answer. Easy.
We're still trying to figure out if you're 17 or 18.
Tom, he looks older than Will, okay?
I can't hear you. I'm 50 now.
He looks older than Will, so.
Yeah. At least he's got a driver's license.
At this time in the meeting, we open up the floor for public comments, for any item that is listed on the agenda. If you're here for any item on the agenda, this is your time to speak. We will not be having public comments once we get into the regular part of the agenda tonight, and everyone will have three minutes to speak. So if there's anyone that would like to speak, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name is Camille Bilby. My address is 45095 Custer Avenue. The City of Utica's municipal code defines a bed and breakfast as the following: a use which is subordinate to the principal use of a dwelling unit, as a single-family dwelling unit, and a use in which transient guests are provided a sleeping room and board in return for payment. This means that both the explicit language and implicit intentionality of the bed and breakfast definition reflects the unit as a home primarily. At its core, this is a definition intended for pre-existing residents of the area, not for outside individuals purchasing property in the city's residential zones explicitly for the use of their own enterprise. It is important, in order to maintain the structure of our city, to ensure allowances for such businesses cannot be used as loopholes to infest our residential areas with short-term rental units. The strict diligent regulation of such units can suffice, but I believe that the outright banning of such units in areas of our city that are explicitly zoned as residential, that is to say, not mixed-use districts, is a viable solution to the problem. This cannot be overlooked. To begin, I would like to state that there is precedence in the state of Michigan for such an ordinance in Gross Point. With the exception of a few areas in the village of Gross Point, specifically those zoned for commercial business or mixed use, short-term rentals are prohibited in the city. The City Council of Gross Point, which also serves as a planning commission, voted unanimously as both bodies in favor of a zoning tax amendment defining a short-term rental as 30 days or less, and to ban short-term rentals in all but the C-2, T-1, and T-2-zoned areas. I believe that such an ordinance would have its place in the City of Utica. The residential areas of our city, the homes of our community members, should not, under any circumstances, be treated primarily as a business venture. We are a tight-knit, quiet community full of families, children, and seniors. Our city is built on its people, and the safety, peace, and happiness of the people should always be of utmost priority. For the sake of our residents, it's important that our voices are heard regarding our opposition to properties in our residential zones being purchased with the intention of creating short-term rental units of any kind. The protection of our community is in the hands of the City Council, and I would like to express my understanding regarding that there are potential lawsuits and upsets that such regulations and ordinances can cause. Whether that may be strict rules regarding bed and breakfast units or the outright banning of short-term rentals in residential zones, I would like to note here that as of 2022, Gross Point has temporarily banned the operation of bed and breakfast units altogether until proper regulation can be imposed. There is precedence for this to occur under state law as well, should that be the council's decision. And I would also like to express my trust and faith in our city and our law enforcement to uphold our community's values in peace in both the short and long term. Legally, it's difficult to retroactively impose regulations on existing properties in the city, so it's of great importance for the city to make moves now to define the rules regarding short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts so that regulations can be effectively and fairly enforced. As of today, Gross Point's citywide ban of short-term rentals in residential zones has held water with minimal to no legal opposition in its time since its inception, and the death of House Bill 4722 has ensured the local right to such bans. This means that it's the right of Utica to make her own decisions regarding the prioritization of her own citizens. The definition and upkeep of such rules can only be good for the community. If short-term rentals cannot, thank you.
Thank you.
All the parties' presentations.
Thank you.
Pull it down for time.
Thank you.
And. One moment, have a staple.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi.
If you could state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Jeanette Bilby. I live at 45095 Custer Avenue. I'll start by defining what a bed and breakfast entails. According to the Bed and Breakfast Innkeepers Guild, members must meet certain criteria to join, including but not limited to: a business license, insurance that shows the operation of a bed and breakfast, liability coverage with the recommended amount being $2 million, a food safe certificate, safety features, including but not limited to: smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, emergency exit plans, first aid kits, sufficient lights for nighttime safety, and fire inspections in some cases. These requirements do not call to mind a local family renting out rooms while their children are away at college. A bed and breakfast is run by hospitality professionals and should not be treated as residential land use. The appellate courts in other states have found that, while homeowners have the right to rent their homes to long-term residents, short-term rentals have a fundamentally different character of operation, and thus a negative effect on the community. Those who stay in a bed and breakfast are not required to undergo a background check. In a six-month period, a bed and breakfast of this scale has the potential to bring over 400 strangers into Utica, none of which will be subject to any security measures to weed out potential criminals. It's not surprising that a study by Northeast Union University researchers found that a proliferation of short-term rental units in a neighborhood contributes to higher rates of crime. Furthermore, the California Association of Realtors is now asking on their seller's property questionnaire whether the home is across from or next to a short-term rental. Professional appraisers monitor the location of short-term rental properties in order to inform their buyers, with one appraiser specifically citing the downgrade in security and privacy for all surrounding homes in relation to short-term rentals as degrading a location's value, and even a house facts report will disclose this information to potential home buyers. The presence of even one bed and breakfast in a neighborhood is likely to limit both the saleability of houses and the securing of long-term renters, which would be a direct pipeline to more bed and breakfasts popping up across the neighborhood. This cycle is already beginning in the U.K., with 2.7% of landlords making the switch from long-term to short-term rentals, and another 10% considering this possibility. With the risk of bed and breakfasts bringing more crime into our neighborhood, it would be expected that the owner is responsible for any problems that arise, but it seems as though he's asking us, the longtime residents of Utica, to become functionaries in the security of this property. This is an unnecessary burden on our police and our neighborhood as a whole, understanding the incidents that have recently occurred. I ask that the City of Utica restrict these ventures until we can evaluate the benefits and risks of commercialized short-term rentals in our residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, sir.
Tad Bilby, excuse me, Tad Bilby, 45095 Custer. There are many old laws on the books that are no longer relevant today in the state of Michigan. A woman is not allowed to cut her hair without her husband's permission. That's on the books. No man may seduce an unmarried girl, or he risks five years in prison. A man may not scowl at his wife on Sunday. In Kalamazoo, there's a law against serenading your girlfriend. In Rochester, all bathing suits must be inspected by police. And in Utica, bed and breakfasts are allowed in residential neighborhoods. The 1970 law allowing bed and breakfasts to be opened anywhere was enacted in an entirely different type of city than we are living today. Utica was a sleepy bedroom community with a classic downtown. There was no Sam's Club, no Jimmy John's, not even Lakeside Mall. The short-term stay hotels east of M-53 did not exist. Hall Road was a boulevard. M-59 stopped at Mound Road. With the downtown Macomb enclosed, a bed and breakfast seemed like a natural choice as they were defined in the '70s. This is a small lodging establishment that offers overnight accommodation and breakfast. As more and more lodges and hotels were built in the 19, recently, bed and breakfasts were seen as affordable accommodation for people traveling through small towns or areas that weren't as heavily developed. Utica of 1970 was not heavily developed. Utica of 2023 is. With a great thank you to the owner of the new bed and breakfast on Custer, who passed out packets at the planning committee meeting, we can see that short-term lodging is not only available in Utica, but the market is saturated for a city of 2.2 miles. The Stabridge Suites, the Hyatt Place Utica, La Quinta Inn and Suites, east of M-53, all offer extended stay options. Closer to shopping and restaurants, these accommodations are prime for short-term guests. Unlike 1970, there are multiple accommodations for people traveling through our small town. As more and more cities ban short-term rentals, investors are looking for places to set up shop. The houses for sale in Utica could quickly become transient accommodations.
30 seconds.
Without restrictions on our, in our residential areas, this commerce could blossom, so transient people would be in and out of our neighborhoods constantly, watching our children, observing our homes and vehicles. The permanent residents would no longer know their neighbors as we do today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Stacy Bilby, 45095 Custer Avenue. After the last police-rated party at the bed and breakfast on Custer, there was a rash of attempted car thefts in our neighborhood. Perhaps a coincidence, perhaps not. According to the Michigan Automobile Theft Prevention Authority, auto thefts and auto-related thefts are up. From personal belongings, to garage door openers, to catalytic converters, thefts are up 24%. Michigan ranked the worst state for car crime. Inviting transient people to our residential neighborhoods increases our chances that this crime will become prevalent in Utica. Human traffickers and sex offenders who prey on children are a growing problem in 2023. Toledo, Ohio is the fifth in the country for human trafficking, with a contributing factor being a direct highway leading to Canada. Toledo is a little, it's a little over an hour from Toledo to the Ambassador Bridge. It is a little over an hour from Utica to the Blue Water Bridge. Utica's schools are ranked highly in the state of Michigan. They're a draw for homeownership, long-term renters, as well as school-of-choice students. A city full of transients is not conducive to safe neighborhoods where our schools are located. Those of you who grew up or raised children in Utica were blessed to have safe residential zones where you knew your neighbors, kids could walk to school, or take their bikes to the park. You could leave your doors unlocked and your cars unlocked with relative safety. Please afford the homeowners of today the same quality of life. The proposal by the Planning Commission does not overcome these problems, but certainly is needed. Perhaps a committee of permanent residents could further make suggestions for tightening regulations in residential zones. Please, let's keep Utica a family-friendly place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could state your name and address, sir.
Tim Corthalz, 45094 Custer. I think it's a good thing that we're addressing short-term rentals in the City of Utica, but I think back to December 18th, and I think that we might not be having this conversation had I not shown up on my doorstep to find a young girl screaming drunk in my front lawn. I don't know that the police would have known that. I don't know if the City Council would have known that, but I knew that. And upon further investigation, found that the owner of the property had rented the facility to two teenage girls, what appeared to be teenage, I should say. I didn't validate their ages. But upon talking to them, found that they possessed an Airbnb flyer presented by the owner of the home and rented the facility for a party. I think the police report from that night shows that there may have been drugs, alcohol, and firearms at that facility, at that house that night. A mistake, the landowners stated. Another party occurred there on December 30th. Another young man rented that property under the guise of an Airbnb. That young man was asked to come to the house with cash to pay for that rental. How do I know that? It was brought to my attention so that I would not squeal on these people. Now unbeknownst to the landowner, I know quite a few people in the city. I've been here for 28 years. I've had a lot of these children, now teenagers, in my home with my daughters and my granddaughter. For them to be exposed to something like this, I think, is absolutely a travesty.
30 seconds.
And for the landowner, Airbnb owner, to come before City Council, to come before the citizens of Utica, and to come before the Police Department and say it was a mistake is a bold-faced lie. He knew exactly what he was doing. It's your decision on Airbnbs, short-term rentals, but everyone in this room needs to know the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? Please state your name and address.
Mark Ricketts, 45214 Hecker Drive. Unfortunately, I was well aware of what happened. I was close to it, and I was brought out in the evenings that these situations happen. And it's, there was more than two. But regardless of their point, I think everybody's got the point, the gist of how a lot of people that live close to that residence and other people that live in the community blocks away. I took a little bit of time, and it wasn't much time, specifically made contact at 39 homes throughout the subdivision, not specifically within 10 houses of the home that's in reference of this, but throughout the community, blocks and blocks away. Went to 39 houses. I had 38 people say, absolutely, do we not want short-term rentals in Utica, in our neighborhood? Comment made by one is, is you know something? I want to know who my neighbor is. I want my children to go in the backyard and maybe know the grandpa next door, or maybe visit with the child that they go to school with at Flickinger or Trinity or St. Lawrence, not somebody that they don't know, may never know again, may never see again, or Mom and Dad, why were the police next door last night? Okay? The night that they had four Shelby police cars respond, I believe, two Utica police cars respond that night, approximately between 50 and 65 people, underage, most of them, dispersed. You know, they, the police officers supported the community to the best of their ability, did a great job, but these kids dispersed throughout the neighborhood, broke one gate, one fence latch, and a guy in the corner who seeded his yard, there's big muddy footprints about that deep, where one of the kids ran through his yard where it was perfectly graded and seeded. You know, it was, it was a terrible night, terrible night for our community. So literally 39 houses, 38 nays. One was, really don't care. And then there's another additional, I believe, 12 here. So it didn't take much effort for me to go door-to-door in probably total less than an hour to those houses, and like I say, out of 39 positive communication, 38 were, no, we don't want this.
30 seconds.
That's all I got to say. I've got copies, if anybody wants to see these, if they want to be passed around, I can leave them and pass them up to you. You can review them, and there's more than this available, too, if you'd like more.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Diane Mueller. I've lived in my home in Utica for 44 years, raised my children here. I live directly behind the home that has, wants to run an Airbnb or bed and breakfast. Not sure which way they're going. I'm not in favor of it. I have never, ever not felt safe in Utica. I have always felt like I was completely safe and comfortable. I've known my neighbors, they've always supported me. We've always supported each other, and I really don't feel safe anymore, to be honest with you, if I'm going to have people coming and going in a home behind me, and I never know who it is, and right now it seems to be run mostly on weekends. This is the winter. When the summer comes and Jimmy John's opens up, I'm afraid to even think what it's going to be like if I want to go out in my yard at night, or if I want to even open my blinds and have anybody be able to look into my home or anything else. And I love being in my yard, I love spending time out there, I love my home. I plan to stay in my home as long as I can, but I'd like to know that I'm keeping the value in my home, and I don't know if I am anymore, if this comes into Utica. If that home is allowed to run a business directly behind my home, from everything I've read, from the statistics that people have put in and people I've talked to, they will not, that will depreciate the value of my home. If I put my home up for sale and a buyer comes and finds out that there is a rental of a short-term bed and breakfast or Airbnb directly behind them, especially if they have younger children and want to come into the community and live, they will walk away. There's a lot of homes they can go to, they don't need to buy one behind a business. I don't think there's any place, it is a business, there's no place for it being run in the middle of a residential. And interestingly, when I looked out on the internet and I Googled bed and breakfast in Utica, and what came up were all of the hotels east of me on the other side of M-53, those were the bed and breakfasts that came up in Utica. They're businesses, they're in business districts, they're over there separate, there's somebody always there, there's people in control of them, all together different than something being run out of a home. And from what started with this situation, it hasn't been a good scenario, and it hasn't been a good example of what might come. So it really does worry me, and I'm not in favor of it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Please state your name and address, sir.
Excuse me. Andrew Jers, 3345214 Custer Ave, Utica, Michigan. You have the current, I believe you're going to vote unanimously on this, and I am encouraging you to think otherwise. The current bed and breakfast definition is: use which is a subordinate to the principal use of the dwelling unit as a family dwelling unit, and a unit which is, which transient guests are provided a sleeping room and board in return for payment. You have now changed this definition, to which it includes, which is located in a single-family dwelling which is used to house a family unit and its, as its principal use of residence. You're saying now that you have to live there, or you can't have a bed and breakfast. That's your first change. The, you now have a license that is applied, and the, there's an application process which goes, you have the, the city building official who will then review if this is an applicable residence. It says that the designee, in the event that the licensee cannot be in the residence when the bed and breakfast is active. It's always active. So the person who lives there cannot leave the residence. There's not a designee that's, that's there. You have a scaled floor plan, which, again, there's an inspection process that happens. You talk about property owners. There are people who rent in Utica who you, you want to advise property owners that a bed and breakfast is being utilized. You reference 300 feet from a parcel. This gentleman just talked about 39 people that he's addressed. I don't know. That, that's, that's interesting to, to hear. That's very interesting for me to hear.
30 seconds.
The fact that you've reduced the number of percentage of the dwelling sleeping areas by 25 to 20% is arbitrary. The fact that you have a minimum of 25 years of minimum age to rent is arbitrary. You also reference eight people maximum in a home, which is arbitrary. It says, too, that a thousand persons square foot, you can't have two people sleeping in.
Time's up, sir. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to council tonight about any item that's on the agenda? Because we actually have many other items on the agenda tonight, other than just Airbnbs or bed and breakfasts. No? Just want to give you a reminder, when we get into the actual agenda items, we will not be having discourse back and forth. We're going to move through our agenda, so if there is anyone that thinks they want to speak to any, any agenda, this is your chance. All right. For the record, no one else in the audience would like to speak? Next business? There is no unfinished business. Next business is consent business. We do have three items in consent approval of agenda, minutes of February 14th, 2023, and bills payable. I would be looking for a I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent business.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Sakura. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next business, correspondence. We did get some correspondence from the Macomb County Prosecuting Attorney, Mr. Peter J. Lucido. This is what he wrote to us. Dear Mayor Calendino, I am writing to commend you and your staff on your outstanding work. Congratulations on being recognized as a five-star community by the annual East Cities Studies conducted by researchers at I-Labs, the University of Michigan Dearborn Center for Innovation. And he has an exclamation mark, I wasn't real vocal there. Continuing, you should be extremely proud of yourselves. Please continue to keep your positive attitudes and outstanding work ethic. You make Macomb County a better place to live. Sincerely, Peter J. Lucido, Macomb County Prosecuting Attorney. That was very nice of him to send that to us.
Great work, Mr. Mayor. And on that note, I would like to move to receive and file those correspondence.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next business, under new business, is the Flickinger 5K race. And I believe we have a representative here tonight? Oh, two, sorry. It's a twofer. If you could give us your name and addresses, please.
I am Jessica Spiegel at 46152 St. Ert Street in Utica.
Melissa Ervin, 12317 Watkins Drive, Shelby Township.
We come before the council with our fourth annual Flickinger 5K. I do believe that I submitted the same course that we've had for the past three years. We'll be using that same course again for April twenty-ninth, which is a Saturday. The race will begin at ten-thirty for the one mile, and then, sorry, ten o'clock for the one mile, and then ten-thirty for the 5K. We should be all done running the road by eleven-thirty, and everybody home by noon. I don't know if there's any more information that you need. I think Lori has a copy of the map.
What was the date? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. What was the date?
April twenty-ninth.
It's in your, yeah, yes.
Thank you so much.
So if we could have the city's permission to hold that?
It is the same day as the Utica Puppy Parade, which you know already.
We're really good at coordinating that with you guys, yeah.
And I don't think you need any police support on that.
We don't, no, we'll have adults posted at the corners that do only have stop signs as usual. Yeah, that was the only day Bob had for us, so that's the date we went with.
All right, let's get a motion and a support, and if counsel has any thing they'd like to ask the presenters, then we can do that during discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from counsel?
Is it true, Mr. Mayor, that you're going to be participating in that 5K?
Is that the longest one? No, I'm going to do the, what's more, 5K or one mile?
Some reports indicate you're going to be running it. With the chief again. Someone said you missed the lucky left for cattle, you want to make it up on this one.
I was there, I didn't see you though.
I was incognito.
Oh, very good. Is there any further discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. That was easy, huh?
Should be fun day that day, a lot of stuff going on in Utica that day.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next business is a resolution for charitable gaming license at 13461 Hall Road. Do we have the petitioners here?
Yeah.
Please give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Sharkey Barry. The address is 5325 Vineyards in Sterling Heights. Actually, I am the secretary of Bethna Rain Culture and Family Club. It is a nonprofit organization. We are asking your help to approve the bingo license. We already have the 501(c)(3) from Lansing. We've been actually active the last six years, donating a lot to charities, different organizations. Among those actually are, we get adopt refugee family, ladies of charities, to seminaries, to Kaldian Voice Broadcast, to monastery sister of Virgin Mary. And in summertime, because we don't have our own place, we use to go to the parks, we have all elderly people. And among our aims or goals actually is, the newcomers, we will help them in every aspect of living, whether teaching them the language, helping them filling out all different kind of their papers, taking to the hospitals, doing their taxes, filing for Social Security, and different activities. In fact, we, because we didn't have our own place, we used to rent a place temporarily every Thursday, and all elderly people with their family, as I said, it's family oriented, where we go usually, we have three conditions. We were there, no gambling, no smoking, no hookers. And we will like sometimes have DJs, and we collect whatever expenses are from the members. And we still are doing this. And we, the last ten years, we've been doing taxes for elderly people, the ones who are living on Sixteen Mile and Dequender, also the one on Nine Mile and Genar. And we are paying taxes as usual. Now, we found a place, and we are renting this place, which is located in Utica City, and we submitted all the required paperwork for the other city. The address is 13461 Hall Road in Utica.
I know our treasurer did bring up that we believe the signatures are transposed on your form.
Yes, the president's and the secretary of the club.
Okay. We'll have to get that fixed, okay?
Oh, I thought you did. The signature, it wasn't there.
Yes, you printed off.
Okay. And it looks like you're, so are you going to have DJs at this event? Is that?
Oh, most likely we will have DJs as well.
And I noticed the time is from six, there's another typo, it says from 6:00 PM to 12:00 PM. I'm sure you mean 12:00 AM, midnight, is that right?
I think so. And it wouldn't be till 12:00, because the bingo would take only one hour, it probably would be from, let's say, seven, let's say to 12:00, because after that, people will sit, have dinner, and so on.
Well, before we have any further discussion, I'd like to get a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the charitable gaming license located at 13461 Hall Road, as requested by the petitioner.
Motion by Deion. Support by O'Donnell. So now we'll enter into discussion. I know one concern I would have is we have residents that are very close behind this rental hall in Stonefield Village condominiums. Several of them are disabled, most of them are elderly. And I know whenever there's activity in that shopping center, we tend to get calls about that. So we do have a noise ordinance in the city. What is the cutoff for noise? I think it's 11:00 PM, is that right?
I believe so, yeah. The concern is obviously if you're near the business, where you're in the residential section, so any activity or people moving in or out, if you're near the business, should kind of take into consideration.
There is two closed doors. Actually, I think nobody outside could hear anything from inside. And we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be that loud, because we won't have children in there, we won't have teenagers.
Sure.
Generally, we are from fifties and up.
But you look like a partier, I'm going to say.
Oh, not me, not at this age anymore.
The whole back of that building's, pressed around, it's like corridors, so I don't think there would be a whole lot of interest.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify for counsel's edification that this is just the resolution that is required by the state to receive a gaming license. Certainly, a petitioner would still need to follow all other ordinances of the city with regard to what they're doing at that location. This is just.
Definitely, this is one of the conditions.
And the resolution will specifically read that, that the request from petitioners asking that they be recognized as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming license. So the state could still approve or deny it?
It could. Actually, we are renting a place, because this place is going to be under the name of Paradise Banquet. It's going to be a banquet hall, and it's going to be a restaurant as well. So we are one of these nights, which generally, it depends on their, how occupied they are, how busy they will be, we will have only one night for this event.
I have a question. Mr. Bahi, I did a little bit of research, and I was looking to see who it is that you helped. And I didn't find a webpage, I didn't find a website, I didn't see anything on Facebook. So how, who do you help, and how do you find these people, and how do they find you?
Okay, through the churches. We got about thirteen churches, they are Kaldian churches, in the tri-county. And all the people, they attend the masses, they know we have people, and they usually, it's a word of mouth. If people need some furniture, we call other people that they don't need them, they have used furniture or used appliances, and other people will donate their time, they will pick them up, they will drive them over there, help the people, take them in there and sit. And we always look for the new people who come to this country, and we offer our help in every aspect.
Okay, so you're getting your people through the Kaldian church?
Exactly, churches.
Now also, I've had a little bit of experience of filing for this, and you have to have bylaws and charters.
We do.
And I'm not seeing any of that in our packet.
Actually, we do. And I had already translated the whole thing, but I was going, because the president called me the last minute, I wasn't able to finish, and I have the rough form of the bylaws. If you want me to present it to you, I could give it to you.
I would like to see that.
Sure.
And you have been approved for your 501(c)(3) through the IRS, so I'm assuming you had to go through a lot of process and.
That's true.
All right.
If I approach?
Yes, please do.
This is the rough on the bylaws.
Thank you.
The truth is, initially, we wrote it in Arabic, because most of our people, the elderly people, don't speak or read or write English. But I translated it, but I am not done with it yet.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
I just don't know a lot about these people, but I guess at this point, at least they're where they should be, in a commercial area, conducting their type of business. Again, down the road, it'll be an issue of if there's going to be music, or food, or anything like that, that's going to have to be dealt with at a different level. But the idea of this going so they can get their license from the state, I'll vote yes, and then we'll have to deal with everything else after the fact. So yes.
Okay. Terrencey.
So by voting yes right now, that's not approving them to start, it's just.
It's approving them to continue with their license.
It's just a component that they need to seek a license from the state of Michigan.
Okay, so then they would have to come back to open up.
Well, I don't know if they'd have to come back, it depends how it's owned, and what's been approved, and what would happen.
I don't believe they would have, they have a rental agreement with the Paradise.
Correct.
Yeah, I have to vote no, and only because we don't have the information. This is a lot of information for me to read right now, and I would just like to know more about, I wish that you had a website or a Facebook page or something that I could, you know, find out information on it.
Your approval, as the counsel mentioned, is one of the conditions by the state of Michigan in Lansing. So if we get your approval, then we will have to abide by all the other requests. As for the restaurant, actually, it's already in there, and he had already obtained a liquor license, beer and wine and liquor. He is waiting for the approval of the Fire Department of Utica City. So we have nothing to do with that.
Can I clarify? This is going to be at Paradise Banquet Hall, which, so one day a week.
Correct.
It wouldn't be a full-time bingo place.
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason actually is to, actually would be one of the source of the income. Whatever we are helping now is from our own pockets. But we would rather have a bingo, they will enjoy, they will play, and will make some money as well, then that money would be able actually to try to probably help more people if possible.
And, you know, we've already went through the discussion period, so at this point, we really are just voting.
Okay.
So can you continue the roll call vote, please?
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Good luck with the rest of your process.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel. And hopefully, we'll be invited one of these nights to probably check.
I would love to come.
To check their food.
I would love to come.
We will be checking their food as well, because we've been on so many places, I don't know how they can run this one now.
Right, right, right.
Thanks again.
Congratulations. Have a great, great luck with the rest of your process, okay?
Thanks.
All right, next business is the 2023 Gasoline Alley Car Show, working with USA Tire across the street. They asked me to submit for them. The Gasoline Alley Car Show has become the premier family event in Utica. The organizers are requesting to hold this year's event on Saturday, August 12th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The footprint for the event will be very similar to last year's. Requests for road closures and other specific requests will be made at future council meetings. This request is only for permission to hold the event so that they can start their planning and promotion. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the scheduling of the 2023 Gasoline Alley Car Show for Saturday, August 12th, 2023, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Ryan. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. I will let Rick and Megan know, they'll be very happy to hear that. Next business is the engineering services for our Michigan Enhancement Grant projects. In case anyone hasn't heard, we were very fortunate to be awarded a $2.5 million grant for public safety projects and infrastructure projects. I'm sure Chief's going to have something to talk about when we do fire reports. This agenda item summary is relating to the infrastructure projects. And I'll read what we have here. The city of Utica has received a Michigan Enhancement Grant to be used for public safety items and various infrastructure projects. The city's engineers, Hubble, Roth, and Clark, have assisted the city with pre-engineering and estimate work as part of the grant process. The city wishes to engage Hubble, Roth, and Clark for plans and specification and contract administration services for the infrastructure projects listed in the attached document. If you look on the document, we have the Davis Street lift station replacement. The dates are also listed, that they will begin design as soon as they get approval from us, and construction completion scheduled for spring, summer of 2024. We have the North Point sidewalks, they are going to start that right away as well, with construction completion scheduled for September 2023. We have sanitary sewer rehabilitation, begin design work as soon as they get approval, construction completion fall 2023 through spring 2024, and lead service replacements, lead service line replacements. That project will probably be the last one to get done, so we know how much money will be left. We kind of left that open as a catch-all, so that we can remove as many lead service lines as we will be able to with the money that is left over from the other projects. We're hoping to be able to get every lead service line in the city removed. So I would be looking for a motion to approve hiring of Hubble, Roth, and Clark for engineering services for the Michigan Enhancement Grant projects.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make sure I didn't knock that loose. I have a quick question. The, for each of these items, there is a construction cost estimate. Do we, does Hubble, Roth, and Clark do the actual construction?
No.
Or is this just the plans?
They just do the plans. Bill, can you explain probably better than I can? Bill, can you explain probably better than I can?
So they'll do an overview of the project, identify what needs to be done, scope of work, design the plans, submit, with the work of the city as well, but submit a template for the bid process, go through the bid process, follow all the process for utilizing the grant funds so that we're in compliance with how the monies are spent. And then typically, we would go out to bid, we would have a bid review, bid opening. They would then look at the bid, tabulate the acceptance of the low bidder, if it was. We'd come to council with a recommendation for award, council would award. And then we would also request to utilize, award of the project, which then HRC would do the, where applicable, they would do the site observation. So the checks and balances, the quality assurances, things like that. So they would see us through the whole project.
Mr. Lang, that was a fantastic explanation. Thank you. Mr. Boehner? That's all I have.
It was a similar process when we repaved Han.
Yep.
And Custer. You know, they kind of oversee the project, like Mr. Lang said, they put it out to bid, they help us get it out to bid. They participated in the bid openings with us. They sent us a summary of all the bids, made their recommendations. And then it would also, all these projects would be coming back to council to award the contracts.
Yes. Throughout the whole process, we have hands-on as well. Public Works is engaged with it, typically myself or someone else, and they walk us through the whole thing. So it ends up being a... And then HRC works real well with us in only engaging the services that are necessary. They've been really helpful in keeping our costs down and American, I believe you'll support that, that where we can do onsite observation and keep the costs down and get, I hate the bang for your buck, you know, analogy, but that's really what happens there. So they've been real helpful with that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. All right, let me take a deep breath here. I'm also looking for a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget as follows, to appropriate funds for design, engineering and contract administration for the Davis Street Lift Station replacement, sanitary sewer rehab, lead service line replacements and North Point sidewalk projects. Bullet number one, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 592-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 592-536-821000372118 by $176,000. Bullet two, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 202-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 202-449-821000372118 by $9,200.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. All right, let me take a deep breath here. I'm also looking for a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget as follows, to appropriate funds for design, engineering and contract administration for the Davis Street Lift Station replacement, sanitary sewer rehab, lead service line replacements and North Point sidewalk projects. Bullet number one, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 592-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 592-536-821000372118 by $176,000. Bullet two, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 202-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 202-449-821000372118 by $9,200.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. All right, let me take a deep breath here. I'm also looking for a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget as follows, to appropriate funds for design, engineering and contract administration for the Davis Street Lift Station replacement, sanitary sewer rehab, lead service line replacements and North Point sidewalk projects. Bullet number one, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 592-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 592-536-821000372118 by $176,000. Bullet two, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 202-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 202-449-821000372118 by $9,200.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. All right, let me take a deep breath here. I'm also looking for a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget as follows, to appropriate funds for design, engineering and contract administration for the Davis Street Lift Station replacement, sanitary sewer rehab, lead service line replacements and North Point sidewalk projects. Bullet number one, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 592-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 592-536-821000372118 by $176,000. Bullet two, increase MEDC 372118 grant revenue, 202-000-569-000372118, and engineering fees, 202-449-821000372118 by $9,200.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Terrence. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I'd also do have a motion to get approval to hold our annual Memorial Day ceremony at Memorial Park. This is something we've done the last few years and it's been a real nice event. The date, tentative date this year would be Sunday, May 28th, 2:00 p.m. The Marine Corps League Detachment 154 Honor Guard has volunteered to perform a gun salute and play taps. We will also be laying a wreath at the war memorial. We're working with scheduling a guest speaker. Last year, we had an Army officer. Year before that, we had a Navy, retired Navy chaplain. This year, we're going for Coast Guard, I think. So we're trying to hit all the branches before we're done here. Also, we do this in conjunction with the American Legion Post 351. The event here at Memorial Park is pretty somber, pretty respectful. It's not very long, but we move everyone over to American Legion Post 351 where it's a little bit more jubilant. We get pizza donated for it and all the guys get to buy beer and talk about their war stories and the people that have left us and sacrificed for our country. So it's a real good event. I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the Memorial Day ceremony at Memorial Park on Sunday, May 28th, at 2:00 p.m.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Terrence. Any discussion from council?
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I hope to see everyone there. I know it's a little bit off in the distance yet, but this gives me the opportunity to start promoting it on our social media, so thank you. Does anyone else from council have anything to report tonight?
I have something I'd like to say. I would just like to echo the mayor on the Lucky Leprechaun race this weekend. It was great. Mayor did a great job of introducing everyone and I was there, I got to be part of the picking of the winners for the costumes. It was just really a fun, great day and it was a nice day to be outside. And I also would like to congratulate Chief Cody on his retirement. And as I said to you earlier, you know, I was young when I started on council and he was really young when we started on council, so we've kind of grown up together and it's just been a joy to work with you these years. You are really a good chief, so thank you so much for your service. I will miss you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to piggyback and thank Chief Cody for all the service you've given, more than most, so we appreciate you. I know as a resident, I appreciate you, so thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to jump on the bandwagon here. Chief Cody, you've done an excellent job for the citizens. I know that when your turn came to be chief, it was one of my greatest moments as mayor at the time, to be able to appoint you to chief, there was no other consideration. We didn't look outside, we didn't look around, we knew we had the right person for the job right here in house. We kept our Utica family, police officers here within the family. And I think it's a great testament to yourself, your department, this city, your family, the legacy that you brought to the city. You've done a heck of a job.
Can we make him stay?
No.
That's a resolution.
I mean, you're the mayor.
Deion, thank you very much. I've never doubted it was one of your best decisions.
There wasn't a lot to choose from.
You've done an excellent job, so thank you so much.
Thank you, town.
I'm sorry to hurt you later. Same dittos. Chief and I have had many discussions over the years about all kinds of different things, so thank you very much. Then to the other departments, the departments all are doing a good job, but with the snows we've had, I can brag that you can say when you're in Utica and when you're not in Utica by how clean our streets. Our streets were dry before most towns got touched. And I want to thank Bill and his staff for, again, another great job, another great year. So thank you. And to all the departments for the good job they do, but this one stands out, like I say, it's, there's a dividing line, you just see it. So thank you.
We appreciate you, thank you. Anything else? Any other reports from council? All right, next business is planning. We don't have any more, but we do have Amanda tonight. What we are, the next business here is to discuss and deliberate and approve or not approve the zoning ordinance change. The Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of these amendments. Amanda, would you like to give us an update, a summary on it?
Yes, so as you know, later on in the agenda, you'll be discussing a new ordinance that will go under the General Code of Ordinances for bed and breakfast. So what we did here was, the only place bed and breakfast were currently referenced was within the zoning ordinance. So we proposed two amendments to basically go along with the new ordinance that will be discussed later today. And the first one is under definitions, where we basically look to amend the definition of a bed and breakfast slightly to incorporate that portion of where it has to be a single-family dwelling which is used to house a family unit as its principal place of residence and where the owner must reside and live at that residence in order to operate the bed and breakfast. So the original definition was bed and breakfast in a use which is subordinate to the principal use of a dwelling unit as a single-family dwelling unit and a use in which transient guests are provided a sleeping room and board in return for payment. The proposed is not much different, but it's bed and breakfast operations. An operation is defined in Section, Chapter 14, Article 9, in which transient guests are provided a sleeping room and board in return for payment which is located in a single-family dwelling which is used to house a family unit as its principal place of residence. So it's really not that much different. Like I said, we're just trying to really nail down that this is a principal place of residence as its primary use and the secondary use would be the bed and breakfast. And then the second...
Well, maybe you should handle the first motion.
Oh, yeah, if you want to.
Get them separate there. So based on Amanda's presentation there, I'm not going to reread the whole paragraph, but we would be looking for a motion to approve Amanda's first.
So moved.
Ms....
Motion by Robinson.
Support.
Support by Sikora. Any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think we should vote no on this. I think we should, I was going to move to deny the zoning ordinance as presented on page 35, but I think we should deny this with the recommendation of the Planning Commission to restrict short-term residential rentals of less than six months to the hotel district, MXD mixed-use development. I think that residents have made it very clear, they're not interested in having, in having short-term rentals in their neighborhood. It's easy for those of us who are homeowners, I am coming up on almost a decade, but we are in the midst of a housing crisis. Anybody under 40 will tell you how difficult it is to find affordable housing. If we have people buying up homes to rent them out to strangers for seven days at a time to throw parties, that's going to drive prices up even more. I would encourage my fellow council members to vote no.
If I could mention, I don't really think that's happening in, on this AIS form. Right now, all we're doing is approving or denying Planning Commission's vote to change the zoning ordinance language.
Yes, that's the important part. So we have the, the first, so there are two amendments here. The first one locks in, locks in these short-term, you know, B&Bs into single-family dwelling units, which is possibly the worst part of this. It should not be single-family homes that we are restricting these to. It should be in a hotel district where everything is a short-term rental, but also the proposed bed and breakfast operations, it says shall be allowed in one-family residential districts, R-1A through R-1-B. I don't think they should be, that's what I'm objecting to here.
If we deny, if we deny this recommendation from Planning, what we're doing is leaving the existing bed and breakfast ordinance in place. So it's...
For a month, yeah.
Well, until it is addressed in the future, if it is addressed in the future, but...
And just for reference, the existing bed and breakfast would still be permitted as a grandfathered use. So if we did, just so you know, if we were to restrict them now to DMXD, MXD, C2, the one that is existing would still be permitted because it's a technically grandfathered use because the ordinance currently allows for it despite some of the illegal activities. But the use is permitted currently, just as an FYI for everyone to know.
Right, right. Yeah, we can pass like retroactive laws.
In discussion, again, to be clear, and I think I asked you before, but as far as, this is bed and breakfast. As far as Airbnbs, we deny them now, we deny them in the future, they are not on the table at all.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
And again, when I'm looking at this here with this bed and breakfast, is the owner of the property, are they supposed to be on-site all the time?
Yes.
Okay.
Or they're designated. But again, that's later on.
That's later on. I'm just trying to put this in perspective. I understand we were cleaning up the mess that we have now to get that going and then we can address that later, so, okay.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
districts, R-1A through R-1B, permitted. It is in compliance with the bed and breakfast operations ordinance we'll talk about later. So this is a zoning rule saying that bed and breakfast operations shall be allowed in essentially all of our residential districts.
And I would add, they are currently allowed right now, with very little regulation, four lines of text, which if you read that language, maybe I should read that to the public.
Well, we can reduce it to one line of text, not allowed.
But that's way outside of the scope of this, and we definitely can entertain that idea, but the scope of this tonight, what we're doing, is either approving or denying language that was unanimously recommended to council to approve. So that's what we're doing tonight.
Sure, but that's what the deliberation between these two bodies is. I mean, we, sure, they can send us, sure, we can do this in one-family residential districts, I think we should do it in the hotel district. We can always, we are the arbiters of, you know, what the final say is on zoning. I say we send it back to Planning and say, put it in the hotel district.
But to clarify what has been said, we are not adding any bed and breakfasts to any areas of the city that are not already there. They are allowed with little or no regulation in the entire city as it stands now. If we don't take action tonight, that will be in place tomorrow as well.
Right, but if we take this action tonight, bed and breakfast operations shall be allowed in one-family residential districts.
Which they are now.
Right, which is what I'm saying.
As we get further in the agenda, I think you'll see that the new proposed bed and breakfast ordinance puts in place many restrictions, many controls that are not currently in place, and it'll make our neighborhoods much safer, all our residential areas much safer than they are now. And that's the goal tonight.
No amount of regulation is going to increase our housing stock, excuse me. So as they pull these houses off the market, we're driving up costs for residents. So no amount of regulation is going to stop that. No amount of regulation, somebody made the point, you're essentially running a business in the middle of my neighborhood. That will still happen, if we vote yes on this.
Well, again, I have to refer what we're going to be talking about later on in the meeting. The new ordinance, which, right now, there are no restrictions on this bed and breakfast. The new ordinance will restrict bed and breakfast operations to the owner of the home, and that owner must also be listed as the primary resident of that home. So no corporation's going to be able to swap, snap up homes like you're saying. Only the owner of the home and the primary resident of that home can open up their, a room in their house, what is it, 25% of their floor plan, to a bed and breakfast guest. It is not going to allow, as you're saying, and I want to make sure the residents understand, there is no way under the proposed ordinance, which we will discuss later, that a mega corporation can buy 10 houses on Brownell Street and turn them into B&Bs. That is distinctly not allowed in the new ordinance. And we can address that, that's really outside the scope of what we're doing on this agenda item, but we can continue that discussion when we get to the ordinance itself. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
No.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We have no report from Mr. Grusa tonight, and assessing, we do have a presentation from Mr. Hicks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to try and get our scheduled fees increased for the Building Department, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and building. The mayor and I sat down, I showed him in black and white where we are and have been the last few years, and how far behind we are with other neighboring communities. I did an extensive search with our surrounding cities and cities that are the same size as us. And in doing so, we found that we are way below, in most cases, on our fees, all right? Last year's budget was, the Building Department, I believe, was $16,000 in the red, and that's part of the reason. We're not charging enough. It's the contractors that pay the fees. We definitely need to raise these. There are some of the cities that I had dealt with, talked to, and they're even going to raise their fees more. There is a, the state puts out a, what is it, every quarter, I believe it is, they put out a recommendation of what we should be doing. We're not going to raise it every quarter, it's obvious. Most cities, they do it once a year, once every two years, where they raise their fees.
Questions? The clerk did provide everybody with a copy. It was in the back-up, but it was hard to read because when she scanned it, there's a gray background. So the gray column, the back, the column with the gray background, that's what Mr. Hicks is proposing.
Oh wow, I just noticed that. Mine is colored, so...
You can read it, yeah. We also have, to the left of that, what our current permit fees are, and then Jerry did all the hard work to figure out what all the different municipalities are charging for similar fees. It was a difficult thing, because every city, every municipality, has a different way of charging, so it wasn't like a one-to-one match. Some cities didn't list certain inspections, other ones listed inspections we didn't list. So you did a great job, Jerry, trying to compile that information, knowing that there were gaps, it was just not available. I reviewed it thoroughly with Jerry, we found some of our fees were like one-fifth of what other cities were charging. I know at budget time, every year, I complain about building because they seem to always be in the red. We hope that this will alleviate that problem. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hicks?
No, but I have a comment, and again, I thanked you before, and I want to thank you again, because I know how much work this was for you to do, and somehow I was able to read it even with my old, old eyes on my packet, and I think that you were very fair, and I could tell that you were thorough. Some of them went up, some of them didn't, some of them went up a little bit, some of them went, but they all were, they should be right now. So I commend you and I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Terrencey.
Mr. Mayor, sir, are you looking for a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay, sir. I would move to allow the increases as proposed by Mr. Hicks.
Support, or second?
Motion by Deanne, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hicks, what is a, on page 44, line 11, what is a mixed-use district fee? What is that for?
Which department are we looking, plumbing, building? If you look at, if you guys have, if you look at the top-left corner, you'll see the headings under A and B.
Plan, review, fees, I don't think that's the header.
It's probably under building, then.
Do you know what row it is?
Yeah, 11.
11?
It's on VE5.
It's the third page.
Yeah, it's page 44 on the packet, but I don't think that's helpful.
Yeah, page 3.
Yeah, plan, review.
Is the fee $102, $102.50, is that the one you're talking about?
It's the third page, Mr. Mayor, and it's item number 11.
Yeah, $500 flat fee, $500 proposed. I'm just curious, what is a mixed-use district fee?
So, the DMXD and MXD, they're all conditional, special conditional uses, so any new business that comes in, typically we'll have to have a public hearing and then final approval from City Council. So I believe the fee is that rate because we need to post a notice and local newspaper and do a slightly more extensive review of the site planning.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. I can't find it. Any further discussion from council? Going once, going twice. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jerry, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
I know it was not easy.
No, it wasn't.
We have no report from the library tonight. Chief Osack, report from fire.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, Monday, hopefully, we'll bring our fire truck home, or start. We're going to do the final inspection on Monday, come home Tuesday, hopefully. And it's been five months, and we got pressured there at the end.
Yeah, we did.
They were getting a little antsy, it's been a five-month trek of purchasing this thing and waiting on the state's money, so...
Five months, you ready?
Yeah, almost to the day. So, I just want to thank the fire department we're buying from to being so patient with us, because they did have another buyer for it, and we were really getting pressured this last month, that they wanted us to move on it, and so...but thank you for approving it. We're going to be retiring a 33-year-old aerial. It's currently, I'm putting out feelers for an appraisals on our truck to see what we can get out of it, if anything, so...but other than that, thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work. And it's my distinct honor to say for the last time, Chief Cody, report from police.
I think the first thing that we have is one of the agenda item summaries, and I will let the Deputy Chief Kaluzny introduce that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you is an agenda item summary, and what this is for is what's called Police One Academy. And what Police One Academy is, is there an online training portal that officers can log into while they're at the department, while they're working, and allows them to get continuing education, training, and stuff. Specifically, one of the highlights of this program is dispatcher training. Currently, to train dispatchers, it costs us their continuing education that they need, between $300 and $600 per dispatcher about every other year. At the cost of the Police One Academy over the five dispatchers that we have, it will pay for itself, covering the whole department just for the dispatcher training and stuff. Police One Academy is owned by Lexipol, and that's a company that we're currently doing our policies with. So it integrates with our policies, it integrates with the training, and it reports to the state commissions and stuff. So what this request is for, is to enter into a subscription-based contract with Police One, and it renews on an annual basis. We have the ability to add and take away users as the department grows, so it's nothing that we're locked into if we have it. Are there any questions over the program?
Let's get a motion on the floor first.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into the agreement with Lexipol versus, or whatever you call it, Police One Academy.
Second. Motion by Sikora, support by O'Donnell. Now, discussion from council. Any questions for Deputy Chief?
I don't have a particularly deep understanding of the providers, courses, et cetera, but this looks fantastic, looks like it would be a really, really good resource, so thanks for finding it, and thanks for pitching it.
And council, beyond that, traditionally, police officers would have to go to a location, Macomb Community College, or these classes sometimes who are off-site, as far as Lansing, or up in, right near Central Michigan, they're Mount Pleasant. You'd find a lot of opportunity to go to these places, which is fun as a police officer, but as far as municipal responsibility, this keeps your police officers in the city, they can train while they're on duty, you don't need to pay room and board for them to travel, and there's no per diem, et cetera. So it's actually, it's the training that you need and want, all the price that is really comfortable for a municipal the size of ours. It's good stuff.
Great points, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Is that all from police?
No, I'd like to get an opportunity at the podium. As you well know throughout the years, I'm not well-known for being short-winded, so...
Chief, you can take your time tonight.
Okay. Mayor and Council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address everybody here as my final meeting as the Chief of Police. It's been over 27 years since I stood before the council. To be sworn in as a new officer, Mayor Protem, you were in the same chair at that time as I reviewed some of the forms. Over the years, I've been very fortunate to have enjoyed a very fulfilling career with the highest honor, being able to be the Chief of Police for the city. I'm grateful for the support of Mayor and Council. You guys have done a great job supporting what we've done with the department for succession planning. We leave the department in very capable hands. I'd also like to thank each one of the city departments, legal, fire, DPW, city administration. I thank you for your support and assistance throughout the years. It's truly a combined effort to provide these residents with some of the best services. To the command, patrol, and dispatch, staff of the police department, thank you for your dedication, your loyalty. It's been a joy to work with each one of them. I wish for each one of them to have a joyful and fulfilling and safe career. I'd like to thank the residents of the city of Utica. Throughout my career, their support has always been demonstrated, through letters, phone calls, food deliveries. This has been true throughout my career, and it has been a positive influence for the morality of the department. To ensure that I acknowledge the most important person in the room, I'd like to thank my wife, Kelly, who's seated here today. At times with dinner that was spent while I was on the phone, addressing matters at work, leaving Thanksgiving as the turkey literally hit the table for a call-out that was transpiring here in the city. Your support for each one of my promotions, most of all for being a sounding board for some of my most difficult decisions. For this, I cannot thank you enough. I want you all to know that I hope that you're all blessed in your personal lives. I wish you success in all the decisions that you make on council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve this city. It's been an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
You should have warned us, we need a box of Puff Shown.
Wow.
That's all weepy. Look what you've done.
We should have put you right at the end, Chief, I don't even want to go on, you know? I can't thank you enough, Chief, I really treasured our relationship. I know how much you care about our city. Working with you has just been a joy. I don't know how many times I've told you, I don't stick my nose in your business, Chief, I trust you, and guess what? It's one of the few decisions I'll come right out and say I was right about, because you always did the right thing for our city. I didn't have to stick my nose in your business. You always looked out for the best interest of our residents, so thank you for your service. Whoever takes over next has got big shoes to fit, and I think that person knows it. So thank you for mentoring, you know, the succession plan as well. Just so everyone knows, we're going to do something a little special for Chief next council meeting. We're not done with him yet, we got to send him off right, so it may be your last council meeting, sitting in that chair, but you got one more council meeting to come to.
For sure.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, as awkward as this is, we go to the treasurer report. Oh, see, I skipped right over DPW, I'm sorry, Mr. Lane. DPW.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you for the kind words with the snow call-outs and just what we do on our daily basis. I want to congratulate the police chief on his retirement, and thank him and his department for their just complete dedication to the support of the Public Works Department in everything that we're willing to pay for.
How's those, how's those...
The delineators, all those good things. But, no, in all honesty, it is comforting. Our work is much different than the police department's, however, we do find ourselves in precarious situations, and nightfall call-outs, and sometimes dangerous underground things, and it's just comforting to know that the police department, whether it's his staff or even the chief himself, they have our backs 24/7, and unlike some other communities, you know, we are fortunate here that I think our departments all support each other, and that's a beautiful thing, and for that, I thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
That being said, thank you for the support with the utility and infrastructure improvements in the city. It will definitely put the city in a higher ranking as far as what your, you know, outside, out-of-mind infrastructure is. It's going to raise the utilities, the underground utilities, to a real good level to leave the city in, so we thank you for that. Spring is six days away?
That's right, isn't it? Doesn't feel like it.
Right, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations again, Chief.
All right, now we move to treasurer report. Taking away your notes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. Before you this evening, you have two agenda items. The first one entitled Fiscal Year 2024 Act 345 Police and Fire Contributions. I present this on behalf of the Utica Police and Fire Retirement System as their treasurer. The city of Utica provides a defined benefit pension program pursuant to Public Act 345 to the full-time sworn police officers and to the assistant fire chief. The pension is funded by contributions from the employees and the employer, and by investment earnings thereon. The employee contribution is 5% of eligible payroll in the form of a pre-tax payroll deduction. Annually, an actuarial valuation is performed to determine the employer contribution, both as a dollar amount and as a percent of eligible payroll. Upon receipt and review of the actuarial valuation, the pension board is required by statute to certify to the city council the con... by statute to certify to the city council the contributions required of the city for the corresponding fiscal year. For the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, the employer contributions required are as follow. For the police department, a lump sum of $228,141, and a employer contribution of 23.94% of payroll. For the fire department, lump sum of $5,738, and an employee, I'm sorry, employer contribution rate of 24.11% of payroll. Let me explain that the percent of payroll is how we calculate the contributions on weekly payroll. However, the lump sum amounts are the minimum that the city must contribute for the fiscal year. So if payroll ends up calculating a larger amount, then the contribution is the larger amount. If payroll is insufficient, then we contribute the lump sum. The action of council tonight is simply to receive and file, and this becomes a component of the fiscal year 2024 budget process.
Looking for a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, Phil.
Thank you. Let me just add that the actuarial valuation from which these figures are derived is available for public viewing by going to the city's website and selecting the Munetrix button on the homepage. The second item is entitled 2022 Audit Engagement. The fiscal year 2023 general fund budget included the fees for the fiscal year 2022 audit engagement with Yo and Yo pursuant to the audit engagement letter. However, the fees for the implementation of Gatsby Statement Number 87 entitled Accounting and Financial Reporting for Leases by Governments, which is a new standard that took effect with the June 30, 2022 financial statements, were not included in the budget as the fees were not known at the time the budget was adopted. For reference, the fees were referenced on page six of the engagement letter. Yo and Yo invoiced the city in the amount of $803.41 for the implementation of Gatsby Statement 87, as described in the audit engagement letter, and therefore, an amendment to the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget is necessary. I ask for a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget, increasing the expenditure for the audit account 101-261-80808 in the amount of $810.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, Mr. Pat Oster?
Nothing else to report, but I was absent when everyone was congratulating. Chief Cody, I want to thank you, Chief Cody, for your years of service to the city. It's been a pleasure working with you all 27 years of your service, and you'll be sorely missed. Congratulations on your retirement.
Just since I've been up here, I may have forgotten, but you're the sixth chief that I have had the pleasure of working with, and I'll just tell you, I've never had a more honest, open police chief than you. So it is truly, it's been an honor, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pat Oster. Report from administration. Madam Clerk.
It's hard to follow up.
I know, I know.
Mayor and council, the deputy clerk, Colleen, has helped along with our DPW administrator, Becky, to put together increases that are necessary for our water meters that aren't used. So specifically, we have an area maintenance meter, sorry, sheet that I, we have put together. You can see all of the prices from Ferguson. It is dated May 11th of last year, but we have confirmed that the prices have not increased any more since then, so based on their increases, we need to increase what we're charging to the residents.
I'll make a motion to increase our fees for the meters as proposed by our city clerk.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
Is this for new installs, or is this for a yearly fee to add into the rates?
This is not a yearly fee, this is for new installs.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Chief Cody, I will say you're my favorite police chief that I've ever worked with. And I look forward to our monthly calls you're going to call, just to say what you say when you call me, so I appreciate that.
All right, what you said. Parks and Rec? Anything to report tonight? No? No report from the historic district commission. Our city attorney, Ms. McGreal.
I might cry. April 11, 2017, Chief Cody was sworn in in this room as chief of police, and I was appointed city attorney on that same day. And so we've grown up and learned together over the last six years, and I'm going to miss you, and thank you for everything you've done for the city. So, anyway. On to the official business. Mayor and council, I have provided a tentative agreement with MAF, which is the firefighters' union, and we would be seeking approval of that. We've had considerable negotiations with MAF over the last, what, year? Or longer?
Longer.
And we went to mediation with the state mediator. You know, both sides really worked hard, and so we provide this tentative agreement for approval, and we're already hopefully working on the language of the contract.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Before our next contract is ready.
And some of the highlights, we are adding a second standby unit. I think we're calling it Tango. Is that right, chief? Not Echo?
I believe it's Tango.
Right. So that's going to be a big benefit to the residents. We thank MAF for working with us to get that done. Right now, we have one standby unit, so we're doubling that capability. Yeah, it was a long process. What is the famous saying? When contract negotiations go well...
If both sides are unhappy, it's a good contract.
So I'm guessing this is a good contract. But, yeah, we thank MAF for all the hard work and the compromises, and, you know, I think both sides, from the city's perspective and from the union's perspective, I appreciate that everybody really was always looking out for what's best for our residents, and I'm pleased with what we came up with, so. As Ms. McGreal mentioned, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the tentative agreement and authorize the drafting and signing of a collective bargaining agreement in accordance with the terms therein.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Abstained.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And your second item, Ms. McGreal.
Mayor and council, we've already kind of alluded to this item earlier under planning, but we have drafted, and I want to give, you know, Amanda a lot of credit, because she really worked hard on that ordinance, and we had several meetings, but, you know, presenting a draft bed and breakfast ordinance for your consideration and potential approval.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the bed and breakfast ordinance as amended.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented by the planner here this evening.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
As mentioned by Councilman O'Donnell, the ideal thing would be to not have it at all, and to keep it out of our neighborhoods and put it in the hotel district. Given the fact that I don't think we can stop that, this gives us a lot of bite into trying to enforce it. Again, everybody here has a house, and we, you know, it's, we feel for it. I'm only a couple streets away. That December 30th party, I was coming back from my son's house, and literally drove up to seeing all these police cars all over at the residence and going, this can't be good. And I can remember kids sitting on porches and officers standing by those kids, and it was just a mess. This is, I guess, a template, and it can be revisited. As far as what we need to even make it tougher, it does, there's a fee, there have to be inspections, how many people, maximum of eight, they can't park on the street, and in turn, the homeowner cannot move his cars on the street and put the other person in the driveway. It's only 20% of the maximum floor space. They can't have, and I don't know how to take this one, no separate cooking facilities. Does that mean if there's any cooking, that can the residents use the kitchen?
Yeah, it means that like on the second floor, you can't have two kitchens or a kitchen in your basement that's like utilized for the renters.
I guess the only part that is in limbo, and this is someplace we're going to have to really visit, says the maximum stay for any guest of a bed and breakfast operation shall be seven days in a calendar year. But that doesn't mean you couldn't have 52 sets of guests.
No, it could be rented out at all times. It's just that this one individual...
One individual, but I'm saying is, so that's one week. So somebody can always have somebody living in that house, which unfortunately, even when you have long-term, and by my house, we've had people buy up houses and rent the houses. Some of those tenants have been a joy, some of those tenants haven't. I had one that lived behind me that threatened me after he dumped all his garbage in my backyard and grew pot and everything else, and so even these long-term relationships don't always go well. So ideally, it would be great to not have this. I don't think there's going to be any way really around it. I think we can tighten this up as we get into this more, and again, just as we relied on the neighbors and residents telling us what's going on, that's the first thing you have to say, is just make a phone call to somebody, and then we'll take it from there. I mean, at least it has some bite. To leave it where we were, it was a disaster, so.
And I would say there is the opportunity to eliminate short-term rentals entirely, if that's what we choose to do. With feedback from the residents, with feedback from council members, if that's the direction we want to go, we can definitely go there. So this isn't like a written-in-stone thing. This is just defining what bed and breakfasts are for the city and putting necessary, extremely necessary regulations around what the current bed and breakfast situation is.
I think that a benefit to this is that the family dwelling, which is used to house a family unit, so the owner has to live there, or his...
That's right. By the new ordinance.
Somebody has to live there. So it's someone's house would be no different than me renting out a room, saying, okay, you can stay with me overnight, you know, you're coming in from wherever, and I'll charge you. But somebody has to live there. It can't be an empty house that is letting people come and go. So it's someone who's there that you will see every day, that Mrs. Mueller will see when she goes out of her ba, you know, her backyard, she'll see this person who's there every single day, and they are renting their room to a person whenever.
I do think what the mayor just said is, I think this would be good to give us some bite and some regulation and something to go by, which we couldn't wait any longer, okay? It was a disaster. And then maybe in the weeks and months to come, we really review that, but we don't leave ourselves open...
Vulnerable.
Vulnerable is a great word in the meantime, so.
And if I could just add, Councilman Sikora, I mean, doing, if we were just to not allow short-term rentals, then the current short-term rental that's been a concern would most likely be grandfathered in without any regulation.
And he took it very personally where he said everything, the gentleman took, that is the root of all these problems, everything was arbitrary, arbitrary, arbitrary. That is our damn decision. It is our city, your city, and he's the one that came in here and wants to take over and make it his city, so...
And I'll just go on record saying there was nothing arbitrary about anything in this ordinance. It was all thought out. Many different municipalities' ordinances were looked at. We found, you know, with the help of our planner, Amanda, and our city attorney, Ms. McGreal, we found a balance that we thought was appropriate for Utica, so there really was nothing arbitrary about anything in this ordinance.
And that's to say that we can't do something different down the road.
Absolutely, yeah.
But we're somewhat protected for the moment.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
No proposed piece of legislation is perfect. Therefore, I would like to move to amend the verbiage in section 14-669...
Mr. Mayor, point of order. We already had a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, and we're in discussion. We have no room for a motion at this point, sir.
That's not true at all, Tom. That's, there was a motion, a main motion made, and I am amending that motion. In fact, you can have a second emotion, a second amendment on my primary amendment.
You can. Robert's rules does allow that.
Oh, so correct.
Yeah, so section 14-669, which is operation requirements, I would like to amend that. I move to amend that to add, no license shall be granted for a property if three or more substantiated ordinance violations to police are made to the property within a calendar year.
Is that your motion?
That's it, yeah.
Motion by O'Donnell. Any support from council?
Wouldn't, not to say that isn't valid, and you're saying if somebody violates the code, but it also says in here that at any time upon review that that license can be hanged for, what's I, can't remember what they, denial, revocation, suspension.
I don't think we need to go in, first, we need to get a support if we're going to go into discussion.
I think it's covered. I'm not going to amend my motion.
Councilman O'Donnell made a motion. Hasn't been supported yet. And a...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I just want to understand. We had a motion. I made a motion to prove...
This is a motion to amend the motion.
Within the motion.
Yes.
Got it.
So before we go into discussion on the amend...
I will make a motion to deny the motion to amend the motion.
I'd like to get a clarification...
There is a motion to amend. Is there a second for it?
You don't even have to do it, yeah. If there's no second, then it, yeah, fails automatically.
Yeah, if there's no support, then it fails without support. Do we have a second? Motion fails lack of support.
Sorry, folks.
Is there, so we're back to our main motion. Is there any further discussion from council?
Yeah, I understand this is a hot topic for a lot of people, but I kind of agree with Ken. This gives the city some standing. It kind of corresponds with some of the other neighboring municipalities are doing, because to be honest, I don't think bed and breakfast were a thing when this ordinance was written. I'd be open to looking at stricter guidelines in the future, but right now, I think this gives us some kind of footing to say, you know, because essentially, when you open an Airbnb in a residential area, you're essentially opening a hotel. So I'd definitely be open to some stricter verbiage down the road right now.
Well, to be clear, this is not about Airbnbs. Airbnbs are currently not authorized, and they will still be authorized tomorrow.
But that's kind of got mixed in this whole thing, and I understand people have gotten upset about it, but my point is...
And the mayor is correct. Airbnbs are not permitted under the city ordinances as a, because it's a home occupation in excess of 25% of the flooring space, so Airbnb... So Airbnbs are not allowed. Bed and breakfast would have to adhere to the requirements of this ordinance if it passes.
Correct.
But, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If somebody were to apply for a B&amp;B license and get approved, they could advertise their B&amp;B on Airbnb.
Absolutely. It's just a website. But they would be required to meet all the requirements of this ordinance. And I would mention, there's some pretty strict requirements, even more strict than three police visits. Under section 14 dash 671, denial, revocation, and suspension, if you read bullets one through four, they're very strict requirements. I mean, one violation, one police call could be reason to deny, to revoke, suspend, or deny a renewal. So actually, I think the section 14 671 is even more strict than three police calls. One police call could adhere to that, so.
Violation, that call.
Or viola, yes, so violation.
I mean, the section is very vague. If you, if we had a building inspector who was more willy-nilly with the rules than others, I mean, let's do unlawful manner, constitute breach of the peace, or to constitute a menace to the health, safety, or welfare of the city. I mean, that is very broad.
Good.
I mean, if we, if we have a specific issue like we had in this neighborhood, we could call that out as a disqualifier off the bat.
Times three.
We wouldn't have to. Sure, but I mean, we could.
This is times one.
If we revoked a license based on this with this language, they would drag us to court, and they would have a decent case.
Well, if they based it on three police calls, they would have a case as well, because that's not a violation, that's not a, that hasn't been through the court system. So a disgruntled neighbor could just call the police three days in a row and complain, right? So that's very vague and very broad as well.
Well, the amendment was substantiated, so that would have to be a legitimate call to police.
Okay. Well, again, I think we're getting off topic.
Well, yeah, it doesn't matter anyway.
Is there any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Part of this ordinance requires city council to set a license fee, which is an annual fee, that can be amended, changed in the future by an act of council. I would be looking for a motion to set the bed and breakfast license fee at $275 per annum.
Can we amend that? Or does it have to be that?
You're going to make it bigger?
I think we got a motion.
Right. I'll make that motion.
I'll support, sir.
Discussion.
Wait, hold on. Motion by Ryan, so she gets it, support by Deanne. Was it Deanne or Robinson?
No, no.
Okay, by Deanne. We are now open for discussion.
What is the current, is there a rental fee for rental properties? Is there a fee that's associated that they have to pay?
For long-term rental, you're talking.
Yeah, for long-term rentals. What is that fee?
Put me on the spot.
How much?
$125.
Is it $125?
For a single home?
For a single home, right? Yeah, so $125 for a single home.
I think we had a spreadsheet right here.
Oh, well, this is.
No, no.
It would be my recommendation, $500.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, that was the first number that popped into my head.
Yep. The higher you, the number you make it, the less incentive it is because you have to then pay that fee back every day.
But keep in mind, it can't be a disincentive. It has to be a fee that defrays the cost of administering the program. It's not a.
Okay, so you're going to have plan review, you're going to have to make sure the drawings that they bring you are legit, you're going to have to go to the site.
Well, there'll still be an inspection fee too.
All right.
Separate from this.
A background check? And if history holds true, can I have a lot of police visits there, so I got, pay for those guys to be able to make a visit?
We're in discussions, though, right? Yes. This number, I looked, I personally came up with this number. I looked at several cities, Ann Arbor, if I'm remembering right, was 500, I think. I don't remember what city I saw, but it was 300, which is less than, or still more than this. I didn't, I saw a couple that were like 200, but I took an average.
I believe Hazel Park is three to five somewhere in there.
Is it?
I believe so.
Split the difference.
Well, if there's no, how do I withdraw my motion?
You could accept a branch.
Split the difference. You don't.
The person who seconds agrees, you could do a friendly amendment if you want.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question before we do that, if I could.
Yeah.
Specifically to Linda, is there not a current license fee requirement for starting a bed and breakfast right now?
There is nothing on the books right now, and that was one of the issues.
So even though it's a business, there's no business license they have to apply for?
There's no license, there's no inspection. I mean, that's really one of the big issues why the B&amp;B ordinance was brought forth.
There's four lines of text. The ordinance has four pages, right, to govern this. Big difference.
So if we look at the process, Mr. Ryan, we need an inspection, right, for Mr. Hicks?
A review, first, a review, they have to submit for license.
We need the clerks' time, does the fire department need anything with smoke detectors? Is that all Mr. Hicks' purview?
It's underway.
All right. I would think that there's, it seems there's enough administrative cost to warrant the $500, and Mr. Ryan might consider a friendly amendment.
I would like to amend my motion to change that, to set the bed and breakfast licensing fee at $500.
I would like to continue with my support of his friendly amendment.
So friendly amendment by Councilman Ryan, support by Deanne.
Further support.
Is there any further discussion? So we're setting it at 500, just so we know what the friendly amendment is to set the fee, the annual fee, at $500. Is that right?
Yes.
Did you get all that, Madam Clerk? Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.